All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Tonight's Eldorado City Commission Regular Meeting for March 2nd, 2020. Roll call Tabitha?
Mayor Young.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis is absent. Commissioner Badway?
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
And tonight, to deliver the invocation, is Mother Christine Gilson from Trinity Episcopal.
Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of communities, and especially for the gift of this city of Eldorado. We thank you for these boys who are learning citizenship with their teamwork. We thank you for those who give of their time and talents to govern the city, and we ask for their discernment in making decisions that affect our lives. Send down upon them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Give them courtesy and grace in their dealings with each other and with those whom they serve. Give them patience and the will to serve with mercy in all their decisions. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. So, tonight, to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance is the Team Synergy 11U Baseball Team. Super excited, baseball season's getting ready to start. So come on up and let's get ready to do this. Are you gonna introduce yourselves?
They are.
Perfect.
That's Beggs, that's Bowen.
My name's Charles, and my favorite thing about Eldorado is baseball.
Hi, my name is Hudson, and the thing that I like most about Eldorado is baseball also.
My name is Akaya, and my favorite thing about Eldorado is baseball.
My name's Tanner, my favorite thing about Eldorado is the city pool.
My name's William Lactenberg.
My name is Daniel Bowen.
My name is Charles Ferris.
My name is Hunter Payton.
All right, now. Let's get it started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, boys. Good luck this year.
I wanted to say I'm sorry for being late. I just left the cap meeting at the library, and they were presenting a check to Kelly for $30,000.
I'd have been late for 30 minutes.
Yeah. But that was a good deal.
Perfect. Tabitha?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis is here.
I've seen her.
Okay, she's making sure.
Sorry for walking in during the program.
No.
All right, so next on the agenda, we do have a proclamation tonight for Severe Weather Awareness Week. It's my first proclamation, do I just read this now?
You do.
Perfect. Okay. That was not me.
That was Brad.
Okay. Whereas, the severe weather and tornado season in Kansas has always been known as a potentially dangerous time, historically producing property damage, injuries, and even loss of life. And whereas, the National Weather Service logged over 1,400 severe weather reports in Kansas in 2019, including more than 120 tornadoes, two of which occurred in Butler County, Kansas. And whereas, everyone is potentially at risk during severe weather and tornado season, which reaches its peak in Kansas between March and June. And whereas, the National Weather Service, in conjunction with the state of Kansas and local jurisdictions, will be conducting a severe weather drill with local tornado sirens, NOAA weather radio notifications, and activation of the emergency alert system on Tuesday, March 3rd at 10:00 a.m. And whereas, the purpose of the Severe Weather Awareness Week is to heighten the public's understanding of the dangers associated with severe weather and tornadoes. Now therefore be resolved that I, Bill Young, Mayor of the City of Eldorado, do hereby proclaim the week of March 2nd through the 6th, 2020, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in the City of Eldorado. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to recognize the need to increase awareness of the potential dangers of severe weather. And in witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Eldorado, Kansas, to be affixed this second day of March, 2020. Well, that was cool.
Yeah, yeah. Good job.
Thank you. Okay, that's my first one of those. So, it is Severe Weather Awareness Week, and, you know, be paying attention for, make sure tomorrow is, I guess, at 10 o'clock in the morning is when the weather radios and tornado sirens are going off. So make sure wherever you're at, you've got, you're able to hear those things. And stay abreast of the situation because tis the season. Next on the agenda is personal appearances, and it does, I don't think that we have any personal appearances on the agenda for this evening. Next would be public comments. Public comment time is for persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items that are not on our agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission. You can do so now. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. As a speaker, you'll be limited to three minutes, and any presentation that you may make is for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do I have anybody here that would like to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium if you would please.
Well, my name is Norma Johnson. I live at 812 West Central. And Mayor Young and the City Commissioners, I would like to have you start out a yard waste collection system utilizing our recycling carts. If the city could pick up the yard waste every week during the growing season, it would be a great service to our community. The present waste yard management site is inconvenient and inaccessible to some people. So here we are with these empty recycling bins. I'd like to see them recycled for yard waste. So thank you for listening.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, Norma. And Norma, just so you know, I think we are, I think Brad is working on something like that.
Good.
I do believe that was part of the conversation.
Well, great. Push more forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to make public comment? All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is project number, for new business, is project number 520, paving, excuse me, paving Marmaton Road, and project number 553, Santeri Sewer Extension for Block 7 and the Stone Edition.
So the item before you is to actually set a public hearing for the special assessment hearing for both of these two projects. We have, again, the paving of Marmpton Road and the Santeri Sewer Extension Project for the Stone Edition. So all the commission is doing tonight is setting the public hearing for...
April 6.
April 6.
April 6. And at that point in time, we'll send out notices and everything to the property owners so that they can come and voice concerns about the special assessment process on that day. But now, we just need you all to take action to establish the public hearing.
Do I have a motion to establish the public hearing?
Mr. Berry, I vote to set the public hearing for 6:30 on April 6, 2020, to be held for the purpose of considering the proposed assessments of the cost of projects NOS 520 and 553, and for further direction, directing individual mailings to each of the owners liable for the special assessment.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda for new business is, excuse me, Flint Creek Estates Development Agreement.
City Commission before you is a development agreement with MRE Capital. They are the developer who is planning to develop 32 single-family homes in the Flint Creek Estates subdivision, which is the undeveloped portion of the Grand River Edition that the commission agreed to sell to Interstate Capital LLC. And so this is, in essence, the same group, there's just a holding company or whatnot, one for the land and one for the actual development. The development agreement itself sets forth the terms and conditions by which the city is obligated to do and what the developers are obligated to do for the project, much like we do for many projects. So the developer will be responsible for constructing the roadwork, as well as the sewer line, and any storm drainage improvements that are required. And then the city does the waterline project. And then the agreement also defines who pays for what. In essence, the city's obligation will be the waterline, we pay for the waterline improvements for subdivision developments, and then on the remaining infrastructure, the developer's responsible for all the infrastructure that will immediately serve their development, except that the city will pay for the, any upsizing of streets, as well as the intersections, and also the storm drainage improvements that are necessary for the improvement. And then the rest of it, if the city has a pick-up, is spread via special assessments, or paid by the developer. In this case, all in front, in one sum. And so as part of this, the agreement defines all of that, it also defines the performance bonds and maintenance bonds, the insurtees that are required to make sure that the infrastructure is built to the city's satisfaction. So there is some guarantee that that will happen. Generally, there are some instruments, again, like a performance bond or a maintenance bond that the developer puts forward, and the city kind of hangs on loose until such times the improvements are completed. And then the maintenance bond will kick in to make sure that the improvements last for, it's like a warranty for a period of time, usually a year. This specific agreement is also, we also include with it an amendment to the original purchase agreement. You recall that back in January of 2019, the City Commission authorized the original purchase agreement for $100,000 for the undeveloped portion of Grand River Edition. Developers asked that we reduce that amount by $35,000 as a way of paying for the environmental mitigation that needs to be done on the property, because when the city owns it, there's actually an oil producer that leases part of that ground, and there was a chemical spill, or an oil spill, rather, and that needs to be mitigated before any housing can be developed. So you'll recall that the developer made a request to that end, and so that's built into the amended purchase agreement. With all that said, the city attorney and I are asking that the City Commission either table this item, or grant the city manager and city attorney the flexibility to finalize the negotiations. Due to timing, we weren't able to come to a final agreement on the development agreement, and when we sent this to the developer, they sent back some comments that we have to kind of work through and incorporate into the agreement, as well as, there might be some things that we may want to negotiate between the developer and the city. So I guess what we're saying is, we're not really inclined to recommend approval of the agreement before you today, because it has changed as a result of the negotiations that were happening over the weekend. So, again, I would ask that you either table the agreement until we reach a final agreement, or if you're comfortable with the underlying framework we have before you, where we have the security instruments for the infrastructure, the amended purchase agreement, and then, generally speaking, the city's gonna pay for what we normally pay for in an infrastructure project like this, then if you want to grant the city attorney and I some flexibility to finalize the negotiation, we can do that in the essence of time. The developer would like to have us file the plat as soon as possible so they can begin construction quickly, because they, as a result of this project, are in the tax credit program, and the clock is, they want to be starting on that very quickly, and so they have a timeline in order to make good on their obligations of that program. So what we were kind of, what Ashlyn and I were kind of thinking is, if you guys would give us the authority to kind of negotiate those final parts, if not, we can table until the next meeting. But if so, then we can finalize the agreement, and the developer will be able to move forward on their development faster than the next meeting, I guess. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, if there are any, and we can go over there.
I'm glad, well, you finalized them. I don't know. I'm fine with Ashlyn and David finalizing them.
I mean, you guys, as long as you stay within the framework that we've discussed, I think.
Yeah, there was just some minor parts that they had some questions about, and so we wanted to get together and kind of build on that quickly before we had an opportunity to have the agreement approved. But in large part, it's pretty much what you...
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready for them to get the project going, so.
Absolutely.
What are your thoughts, Commissioner Wilkinson?
If we give you permission to go ahead and enter into the agreement, and the tweaking that you and Ashlyn are doing, as well as the company go south, are we stuck?
Uh, no. So, there's a couple of checks that kind of prevent that happening. The first thing is the plat. So, we have not yet filed the plat, that was approved by the commission, I don't know exactly when, but the plat's been approved for a little while now. And the primary reason for that is, once the plat's approved, the plat is what it is. And so then a new, so let's say that in a worst-case scenario, for whatever reason, this developer says, you know what, we're not gonna do that project, or we can't come to an agreement, so we're gonna do something else. If the plat had been filed, and the city would, you know, we'd have to offer land to somebody else via sale, or the developer sells it to somebody, they would be locked into that development plan in terms of a plat, which may or may not work for what they want to do. So what we want to do is, we want to wait to hold off on that plat, the filing of that plat, until such times as we have the final and firm agreement, because that's gonna commit the development, the developer to building according to that plat. So that's the first thing. The second check we have is that, once the plat's filed, they can't get a building permit until we have all of these agreements finalized to the satisfaction of the city and our legal staff. So, the building permit's the next step after that, we wouldn't issue a building permit until we're satisfied with all those things that have been done. And then third, we wouldn't authorize any contracts for the extension of infrastructure, which means they wouldn't have water lines, sewer lines, or streets until such times we have a final agreement. So, there's really, they really can't build anything until we have an agreement that's signed, dated, and sealed. Then we'll file a plat, then they'll be able to begin getting bids for construction on infrastructure, and then they can get their building permit for the first single-family home. So there are a number of steps that would need to be done prior to then beginning to construct houses. We want to make sure that we have the agreement in place before we do any of them, because the agreement does obligate them to certain things that we currently don't have any obligation for them to do, such as providing the surety and the bonds to make sure the infrastructure is built to our satisfaction. The maintenance bond, that, once it's built, we want to make sure that it lasts for at least a warranty period. And if it doesn't, then they have to come back and resolve that. And then we want to make sure that the purchase agreement is ironed out in terms of, not only the reduced purchase price, but then if there's any environmental liabilities, we want to make sure that the developer, the purchaser, assumes those liabilities in ways that cities, indemnifies the city of those future liabilities, any future potential liabilities. So there's a number of things that would have to happen.
Okay.
Good, thank you, it's a pleasure. Yeah, good. Do I have a motion?
So let's change this motion just a little.
Okay.
Move to direct the city manager to complete negotiations with MRE Capital for the improvements of Flint Creek Estates, and enter into a development agreement and amended real estate contract. Can you want to catch that?
Can we just say ditto to what Tabitha said?
No.
I mean...
To complete negotiations.
To complete negotiations with the end of that sentence, it's somewhere now.
With Flint Creek Estates.
With MRE Capital.
MRE Capital.
For improvements to Flint Creek Estates, and then enter into a development agreement.
Enter into development agreements.
And amended real estate contract.
And amended real estate contract. Move direct the city manager to complete negotiations and...
With?
And...
With MRE Development.
Well, I know, I'm looking, the development and real estate contract, okay. Decide to negotiate with, with MRE Capital for improvements of Flint Creek Estates, and enter into development agreement and amend real estate contract.
One second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Is that good enough to have the...
Good enough for Bill.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Uh, thank you. Next on the agenda is, for new business, liquor sales tax distribution.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the city received $39,215.05 in liquor tax revenue in 2019. There was a beginning balance fund of $5,222.39, for a total of $44,457.44 that left to allocate. The total requests for 2020 are $48,400, and so we have a deficit of, sorry, $4,262.56. We're not enough to give everybody what they asked. Um, if you look at the page that looks like this with the spreadsheet on it, it's, I think, right after a staff report. Staff figured out what it would look like to give a percentage of the amount based on what they had requested from the organization, and so those allocations are listed there. But you are able to do what you wish. Stand for any questions? I believe there is someone from each group. I think I see somebody from each group.
Okay, so there's the recall.
Except for Kids Need Eat. I don't see, oh, you're here for Kids Need Eat, okay.
Oh, here we go, okay, I see them.
So, do, is Community Services, that's me? And then, okay, so scarf is missing, right? Scarf, he's not here? Okay.
So would it be permissible for us to ask each one of these people to come up and give us a two-minute explanation on what they're doing with the money they're requesting?
That is absolutely within our ability to do.
Hey, it's our commission, you can do whatever you want.
Family Life Center.
Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Darla Carter, and I am the Executive Director of the Family Life Center Safe House. It is a, we are a shelter for domestic violence and sexual abuse for victims, well, for victims of domestic violence and sexual abuse. We're requesting our money to pay for the salary of the Executive Director, our client advocate, and our support facilitator, and then also to help pay for the, our crisis hotline. The shelter is open 24/7, and so the reason why we have upped our grant this year is because we got a budget cut from the United Way, and that usually helps pay for those salaries and that. This last year, we had 39 women and 38 children that resided in shelter. So it is imperative that we keep the shelter open 24/7 and keep this crisis line open 24/7. So that is what I said what we're gonna use the money for, and that's why we had the increase that we did.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
No, I appreciate it, I really appreciate the work you guys do down there.
All right, thank you.
Darla, I'm gonna ask that you stay and do your other one. You have a second request?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
The Family Life Center and Thrive also combined a grant, a very small grant, and that is for the babysitter that we share for the support group that the Family Life Sitter has, and then Thrive has a, their program that they have, and they have a babysitter. So we're sharing the babysitter, and that babysitter is located at the Methodist Church, and so we pay for that babysitter to combine on Tuesday nights for our programs so that we can have the childcare for those babysitters, or that babysitter and stuff. And it really helps because we, the Family Life Sitter was having problems getting a babysitter for the children when the support group was in session and stuff, and so when Thrive had that, we combined them, and it was really, it's working out very, very well, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
You said nobody from Scarf was here?
He is not here.
Okay, so that would be Thrive Butler.
Good evening, I'm Phil Benedict, and the Executive Director of Thrive Butler. We're a relationship-based poverty reduction initiative here for Butler County, with sessions in Eldorado, Andover, and later this year in Leon. So we have an expansion program going on this year, as well as trying to expand our Eldorado program, rather than one class a year, trying to progress it a little bit faster, not by taking away any weeks away from our class, but simply to get more people involved and get them through the class quicker. They, they learn how not to be poor anymore. We take them through a free 16-week course, we pay for meals, we pay for the childcare, and we also provide during that 16 weeks, an incentive card that I buy here locally from either Casey's or from Dylan's to provide fuel, transportation. So they make the commitment for those 16 weeks, we incentivize them to come and make sure that they're there each week. They don't come, they don't participate, they don't get the card. So our ask is to help us, again, pay for our getting ahead facilitator for those 16 weeks, and then after they graduate, they go through an 18-month process of education and working with their volunteer allies, people who are not in poverty, that be with them twice, twice a month, to provide guidance, increase their social capital. So, that matched team facilitator also is on a stipend, and then we have those other costs associated with that, and I'm trying to increase the frequency in which we start a new class, especially here in Eldorado, because of the free reduced lunch program here is at 60%. And in Blue Stem, it's at 56, the next, the next highest. So we're trying to reach people in poverty and help them on a journey, not only out of poverty, but off of government assistance as well.
And how long have you been operating? I know you're relatively new.
Yeah, since the founders started it in 2016, and the first class started in 20, what year is this?
2018.
2018, I think, 2017, in the fall of 2017. So, it's relatively new, we've had three classes here, about to start our fourth. We've had, we're on our second class in Andover, and as I said, later this year, we'll start our very first class in Leon, with help from the Blue Stem School District down there.
So, what kind of participation, how many people are we able to get into these classes?
We limit it to 10.
To 10?
And, and that was something I had to get over when I joined them, but, but in order for people to relate what, what it, poverty is, helping us to understand what poverty is like, helping us to understand the stressful nature of just living day by day, that takes time. And we want this group to mold and building their relationships before we help them with their allies. We think that's a good number, that's what's worked in the past, and that's what was recommended to us by, by the books that we use and the curriculum that we use, so.
Okay.
It's worked out well, which is why I want to increase the frequency.
Something, I would agree with that. Any questions here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your time. Uh, what's that, Communities and Schools?
Good evening. My name is Julie Phillips and I'm the grants manager for Communities and Schools of Mid-America. We have a program here at El Dorado Middle School. Um, and a brief overview of our program is we're basically in schools to help kids stay in school. So we target students who, um, are at risk of failing in school, falling behind, and potentially not graduating with their class once they go to high school. Um, typically, these students, um, live in poverty, have several risk factors. Um, so we start at the basic needs level, so we provide food, clothing, school supplies, hygiene, you name it, we provide at no cost. Those items are available, um, to any student or family at the school. And then we target the most at-risk students with a caseload of at least sixty-five students. Um, but for the whole school, we run programming. And so funding from this program would help us continue being an El Dorado middle school and running what we call the Get Real Program. Which takes, um, students and teaches them not just life skills, but targets them for relationship building. So recognizing, um, toxic relationships, what to do, recognizing dating violence, um, domestic violence in their homes. And then our staff member works full-time in the school as a contact person for them to discuss these matters further. Um, and it starts from friendships all the way up to the marriages that they see at home, their relationships that they see in the community. Um, so we really want to build skills. And unfortunately, that middle school age is often neglected in this. Um, they get to high school and they start to talk about relationships and dating, but they're already starting to explore relationships and dating. They're starting to understand what they're seeing, what they might want, what they might create in their relationships, um, at that middle school level. And if we're waiting to have those conversations until high school, we've missed our best opportunity to create, um, youth that are strong and confident in their ability to stay safe. To stay healthy in their relationship and to promote healthy relationships for the future. So funding for this would close our funding gap for our program at El Dorado Middle School and keep us, um, here and fully funded for another year.
How long have you done this here?
Um, we have been at El Dorado Middle School, uh, I think this school year is our seventh school year. And our site coordinator there, Randy Just, this is his fourth school year.
Okay.
Um, school, Communities and Schools, this is our twenty-fifth year. We're a, uh, regional, we're a national organization and then Mid-America's regional, Kansas, Oklahoma, Missouri, and Iowa.
Okay.
But you've never requested money from the city before?
No, we have not. This is our first request. We, um, get funding from the Department of Children and Families, from the United Way of El Dorado, um, and from the Central Kansas Community Fund.
So did you have a funding deficiency this year or just costs go up?
Um, a combination of always looking for new funding, um, to make sure that our programs have everything that they need. And, um, I think more knowledge and awareness of your specific focus, um, in honing our program. And over the last couple of years to really focus on this specific issue, the stars kind of aligned. We tend to not apply for things that don't relate to us, so this kind of just fit together really perfectly.
Sure. Other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Kids Need Eat?
I'm Martha Riedel and I am the vice president. Our president is currently on cruise somewhere, so I'm filling in for her. We started, she started the program in twenty thirteen. We have serviced, um, every summer, we service kids and we are non-income based because, because we can't do that. Um, we see kids from families, from one to like six kids per family. They are generally needy kids. Um, so this is very beneficial to the family to be able to have a place to come and eat five days a week. Also to get a weekend backpack for, um, six meals, I believe it includes. We are requesting a thousand dollars this year. We request that, we received that amount last year. A thousand dollars from you would provide two hundred weekend backpacks for the children, which would be maybe about two weekends. Or, um, we also, last year implemented a program to allow the kids at the pool and other kids to, to swim free. We would buy punch passes at the pool and then they could use those to swim in the summertime. Um, it seems to be very well. The parents have always been very gracious, very, um, glad to see us. Last year, we implemented meals with, um, I believe, two fast food places here in town to try to upgrade the foods. Because the ones we were getting were, well, I understood why the kids didn't really care for them. Um, so we're trying to get healthier, uh, our goal is to get healthy food, keep these kids from being food deficient. And, and then the, uh, over the summer so they can go back to school and learn in a good fashion.
Okay. And you said you're requesting a thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
One thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, okay, excuse me. She didn't tell me the total. I figured we, we had a higher number and a, a number, another number, but, okay.
They're requesting a thousand for the lunches and three hundred and twenty dollars for pool passes.
I got you.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, what do y'all think? So, so just so, just kind of, what we're looking at right now is, like Tabitha said, more requests than what we have for money. And so, um, the, the kind of chart that's in front of us, um, shows a standard. Did, did you just do a standard reduction, Tabitha? How'd you guys come up with the numbers?
So Tammy did this, um, it is, it's just based on a percentage of the total, um, available and their, did I do that right?
Percentage of what was requested to give down?
Yeah, it's their request, their request is whatever percentage that was of the total requested. And then we just took that percentage times the amount available and that's where they got the allocations.
So do you have any insight, because I wasn't here last year, I mean, I remember this from when I was here in the past, but do you have any insight as to what Scarf spends, is gonna have plans to spend their money on?
So.
Since they're not here?
Dusty submitted his information with the packet, um, and their, uh, request is for ten thousand dollars. Um, and, um, that helps with their mortgage payment for their facility. Um, it looks like he also received a cut in funding from someone else this year because he did it, he increased his as well. And it says that this payment makes up a portion of our annual expense that we will not receive from any other funding resource. So it's like he had to save the problem.
Okay, yeah, I see it in my packet. I'm sorry, I didn't see that the first time.
I got a couple of questions. In the past, we've started the year with a beginning balance. Is that, that's, is that because we held some back?
No, um, in the past, so, so you've had some different years since I've been here. Um, you've had years where you used it all and you've had years where there just weren't requests for all of it. Um, a couple, a couple of years back, we spent more than, and I think actually Commissioner Clark at the time, maybe split plus some. Um, but the, last year, we only, we just didn't have a lot of requests. But there was, if I remember correctly, there was not a beginning balance last year.
Well, I didn't, we had, there was. We were, we were holding on to it because we had a request halfway through the year, didn't we?
Yeah, like, well, we'd had, uh, Scarf and Family Life Center came to us in the beginning with their request. No one else had come to us at that time. Um, we put a, we put a notice out in the paper, but, um, we just hadn't had anybody else. And so the time, you guys decided not to, not to just divvy up the whole pot and, um, saved it. And so not long after that, we received the request from Thrive and then from Kids Need Eat. And then we received another request from Thrive and Family Life Center for the babysitting service. And so that's why they actually still have money left from the grant we gave them last year. And they're just asking to supplement what they have left to give over the rest of this year. Uh, we usually receive, um, pretty good funding update, or pretty good updates of what they've been spending from Scarf and Family Life Centers, to my knowledge. Um, I don't know if we received anything from Thrive. Maybe they didn't tell me that. But those, and Kids Need Eat, I think she.
I assume they spent it on food.
Yeah, I think she, I think her update was this. She provided this this year. That was her, that was her campaign, of what we spent last year. Thrive did include what he did last year in his letter to us, so.
So, you know, I, I, I like that we've got the right, I think the right groups at the table, um, looking for some of this assistance. Um, this money, um, across the board has, has an opportunity. And, and the reason that it's here is to, to help those organizations that, that assist children and victims of domestic violence. So, and drug and alcohol, I think this is, these are great programs you guys have brought to us. Um, I guess my question to the commission, to the sta, to staff is, um, you know, we've got a, a difference or deficit of forty-two hundred dollars. To be able to fill all these at a hundred percent. Um, is there a way to make that happen or, or not otherwise?
To my knowledge, the general fund is currently short. I mean, we, I think that that was reported to you at your last meeting?
Right, it is.
And so, I mean.
I'm okay with just the deduction, staying with that. You know, I, I like how it was, like I was done, um, the logic behind it. So I'm cool with just making the allocation with the, the, the deductions that Tab came up with.
Well, the only, the only thing, and, and they're all great programs, I'm not, that's not even up for debate. But, okay, like, like Scarf last year, they're asking for a over three hundred percent increase. Communities and Schools, I mean, they haven't, we've never, you know, to go from zero to seventy-five hundred, to me, that's just seems like a lot. But, uh, Family Life Center's been around for a long, long time. I mean, we've been, uh, helping them out for a long time. And they've, they're established and they've been here and, and not that there's anything wrong with, with new groups. I'm, I'm glad that we're getting, um. That's the only thing with me a little bit is not fully funding someone we have a long established relationship with. Than fully funding a, you know, a, a new group right out of the chute is my only, not, is not a concern. And, or I don't, that, I don't know, I don't really know how to say it other than I just said it.
Right.
So.
So Scarf still across the street from the Butler County Courthouse?
I think.
No, they moved down to Twelfth Street.
Moved down to Twelfth Street?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilkins, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I think we would go with allocations that the city came up with to spend the full amount of the forty-four thousand. Not the full requested amount. And I realize Community and Schools is a new one, but, you know, if they depend, depend, depend on any state funding, we all know where that's gone. And if they depend on any CDC or C D F money, we know what's, where that's gone. Uh, their sources of funding is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And the liquor tax just, if you think about it, liquor is probably involved in each one of those five categories. So it only seems fair that we give all that we have.
I wouldn't say.
Oh, I know, I know that.
I wouldn't say we give it all. I mean, we don't need any seed money because people are not gonna quit drinking.
Oh.
No, I don't plan to.
Do you have, uh, Commissioner Lewis, do you have any comments or thoughts?
I'm fine with what the city come up with.
So here's, here's my take on it. Um, I agree with, with Nick. We've had a long, long, longstanding relationship with Family Life Center. As well as a great relationship with each one of these entities that have, that have applied for this. Communities and Schools is new to applying to this for us. Um, having had a daughter that's just graduated high school and went through a middle school and been around. Um, I know that the Communities and Schools, and, and having been involved in the school system here for a while, the Communities and Schools program here is great and it's very helpful to our kids. I love what Thrive Butler's doing. I really do. Um, you know, we had a work session last week where we talked about, um, poverty and homelessness and those things that we're trying to really, um, encourage. Outside of, outside of the, the, the city government entity, you know, creating these programs. We're trying to encourage our community to create these types of programs that, that are gonna help. Um, I, again, I, I'm looking at the deficit here, you know, we, we had a, I mean, frankly, we had a, a work session last week where, I, I think at numerous. We were told that we had plenty of study money and I'm looking for four thousand dollars here to try and make up the difference and just fund these things at a hundred percent. I think that that four thousand dollars is an opportunity for us to, to fund these programs at the level that they need to be funded at. To your point, Kendra, you know, money in, in other places is drying up. Um, this is four thousand dollars that, you know, that we, that I'm asking that we try to come up with internally. To complement the four, the forty-four thousand dollars that's, that's, that's in the fund from the liquor sales. It's an opportunity to, to continue with these programs that work to help, um, those in need in our community. So that's, that's my take on it, you know, I mean, I, I would certainly welcome any, any motion or any more discussion. But, uh, when I think about the money that, that we try to free up to spend on projects and other things around here, the, the four thousand dollars for this project seems pretty reasonable to me.
So can you make a motion that gives them what they request or gives them what the city would allocate? Unless we find the forty-two, sixty-two, fifty-six, then give them the amount requested? I mean, that's kind of a double-edged.
If you tell me to find forty-two hundred dollars, I'll find fourteen hundred dollars.
That's what I'm looking for.
Does it have to come out of the general fund though?
It'll come out somehow. I'll find fourteen hundred dollars.
There you have it.
Oh, full money? Jeez!
I mean, you guys, they're kind of scurrying, but, I mean, you, you know, I, I, that was just my opinion. You guys, you guys are gonna make a motion in a second, whatever it is, but that was my opinion. I'd like to, um, again, we've, we've got other projects that we think about, but this is a project that directly impacts, um, the youth in our community and, 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 um, and families that really need the help in our community, so something I'd be in favor of, but whatever you guys wanted.
Thought Bill was banging his cap.
Wasn't me. I can't, if I need to, yes.
I have no trouble giving all of it.
Giving all of it plus what we need to go get.
Yes.
Just fully funding, I would just say fully funding the request. The motion just needs to be to fully fund the request sometime.
Anybody object?
Someone, someone's gotta make a motion.
I mean, I'll make a motion if nobody objects to the.
Make it.
Fully funded.
Well, then why vote?
Make the motion. Somebody may second it and then we'll have a vote.
Because I don't want anybody to say no. Okay.
If you'll just take out the part that says...
As allocated.
In the following manner, to state, out to...
Just read all those, those right there.
She said I didn't have to.
Say, move to fully fund each request...
She won't do that?
Fuck, yeah, fuck.
Let, let Tab talk so she can tell.
If you'll just say that you'd like to make a motion to fully fund each request, and then begin this motion at where it says "and to authorize." So, fully fund each request and to authorize the duty.
Want me to include the, just the liquor tax monies?
Well, because it's not all liquor tax money now, so.
Ah, gotcha. Mr. Mayor, I move to fully fund the request and to authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documents and contracts with the following recipients, and that these funds are distributed consistent with Kansas statutes. Now if you want.
Just need to read the amounts and the, okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Thank you again for all the work that you guys do in our community, it's very, and please keep doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next on the agenda, advisory board appointments.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, that's me. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the listed appointments are what we have as of last Wednesday's work session. We have three appointments for the Board of Appeals, two for the CTC, one for Elder E., two for the Library, two for Parks and Rec, and one for REAP. And we have four of the sales tax appointments from the Commission and one from the Planning Commission for the sales tax. We are still...
I need to add Wade Wilkinson to the sales tax group as one of mine, and then I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of other people on the other end.
And so, other than, so we just need one more appointment for sales tax from Bill, and we need someone to apply to fill the position of the planning commission.
And that's an in-town?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so for the millions of people watching on TV, if you know somebody that's interested in the planning commission, see, please get on the website and fill out the application, and if you could make sure that that's put out there, there's two as well. Lee, that would be great. You've got a great readership with your, with the Butler County News, so.
How, how about you, Lee?
You're brownie.
I'm true brownie. Okay, so I have a motion. I move to approve the advisory board appointments as listed, including Bill's addition to the sales tax committee.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. That is all for the new business. Now, mission board updates.
I have no report. Oh, well, I would like to congratulate Chief Zeeman...
Yes.
On being with the City of El Dorado for forty years today.
Forty years. Congratulations, and thank you for all of your service.
Thank you for having me for so long.
We tried to give it nothing. Thanks for sticking around. Nick?
I don't have anything.
I have two. Our meeting last Thursday, we approved the draft for the opening of the Assistant Director. And then we also set up a committee to help in finding a Assistant Director. For the cap board today that I was at, the refinery has moved their truck traffic from Southwest Trafficway Gate Entrance to Haverhill. That means every bit of the truck traffic is going to go into Gate Five off of Haverhill now, instead of coming to the city. So, that's going to be a big improvement on that. David, when are they going to improve Haverhill this year? Are we going to overlay it?
Yeah. Um, well...
It was in, it was in, for last year, we didn't do it because...
Yeah, it was in for last year, and so...
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, so, so David was right. They just, they wanted me to let you know there'd be extra truck traffic that'll be coming down straight to Haverhill.
Well, it was part of the reason why they postponed it last year was because of the...
I'm sure you can hear himself and his recording, though.
Yeah, it's on autopilot.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Um, that's part of the reason why they postponed it last year, that's why it's just got a, not a very hot driving surface on it right now. They had everything ready, all the patches were done, and the county got news that turnaround was coming. And so, rather than having all that, all the big truck traffic that was going to be involved with that on brand-new asphalt, they opted to postpone until this year. So, I haven't talked to Mike at the county yet to find out for sure when they think, but I'm going to say probably as soon as the weather breaks and the asphalt plans get opened back up, I would imagine you'll see that happening very, very quickly.
That's their project, not yours.
No, we're partnering with them, because they were going to do a certain portion of it, and I asked that they go ahead and go back to Towanda, to the concrete, because the city actually has a project that's going from the concrete north to central for an overlay project there as well. So, I asked that we go ahead and just partner with them, do from Towanda south, all the way to the... We'll, we'll just have a small portion of that, I think it's twenty-five percent. But they'll have, and then they'll have the rest of that, so it's all done at one time. They'll take care of the striping, traffic control, and all that, so. But yes, it is, it is on for this year, so, that portion of it.
Their next turnaround is going to be in 2023. Let's see, they talked about the corporate fire training and how they allowed two El Dorado Fire Department members to be a part of that this year, last year, which was a good deal for El Dorado. They talked about some monitoring they were doing, and then they presented to Butler County Sheriff a check for thirty thousand dollars for helping out with the turnaround, which was good for his. I mean, because he wanted to, he wanted to fund a search helmet that they have up in, in Harvey County, that they use for during those type of situations that they got up there. So, this will help on that. They'll be able to communicate to each other through the helmets.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm, CTC hasn't met yet, I haven't heard anything, Tab, are we meeting?
We're actually trying to get you all together next week. Things have been a little hectic with Mom's announcement. So, we're trying to get all of the things done, but we would like to meet with the CTC and review the applications we received for the branding initiative. Once, and, and then also invite everyone to the interviews for the branding companies. Those will take place on the seventeenth and eighteenth of this month. And we'll be inviting all of you as well. It is not a requirement to attend, but Matt will be there, so.
You just touched on my thunder.
Sorry.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I was gonna attend those interviews with the, with the, the marketing people that we were sending through the CTC for that, so I was gonna attend that and report back. That's in two weeks. I don't have anything else. So just a couple of real quick, brief things from me. You know, we had a work session last week, I felt like we covered some, some great things in the work session. You know, we get calls and conversa, comments, I think, to, to most of us on the commission from time to time with regards to kind of what the homeless situation in El Dorado and in Butler County. And so, one of the takeaways from our work session was to try and kind of work with, with some of our neighboring communities and really understand what that impact is across Butler County. And so, I look forward to David getting that set up with, with our neighboring communities, and we'll have that conversation. So, just taking this opportunity to kind of let everybody know that we're still moving down a path, hopefully to, to find some, find some help there. We, at the work session, we instructed David, the city manager, to kind of prioritize some of, some of the projects for our strategic planning meeting. And, something else I was going to mention from that, but... Yeah, anyway, so, just, you know, we, we continue doing work. Oh, we, we talked about a lake logo at, at the work session, and glad you're here, Lee. Thank you, Lee White, for your post and your, your poll that you put out on Facebook originally with, with some of those logos. We use some of that information to help us make our decision, and, and so I really appreciate, appreciate your help with that. You know, we're, we're working on finding better ways to, to market our lake as, as an outdoor destination, regional outdoor destination for people to go to. And so, we've got some new logos coming down the pipe, and, and you helped us out with that, so I appreciate that. I think that's all I've got. City managers' report?
Uh, the city received two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars in sales tax from retail sales occurring in December, which means our sales tax, year-to-date, we're trending at about forty percent. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. It's pretty early in the year, but we, we're doing pretty good from a sales tax standpoint, eighty-three percent up. So we'll keep a kind of a present of what that looks like. We're kind of projected to bring in just slightly below last year, which was a record year, so. It's kind of an anomaly, but still trending pretty good on that. Let's see, if I scroll down here real quickly. One thing that I did want to update the commission on was with respect to the so-called Truth in Taxation Bill, or Senate Bill 294, that one is the bill that requires, it would do away with the tax, if you recall, but it would require cities and the county especially to send notices to every property in the town, across the county actually, for our purposes in the city, regarding the effect of an increase in assessed valuation, even if the middle of you stays the same. So that bill was actually passed out of the Senate last week, and three amendments were added to the bill. The First Amendment requires the payments made for the cost of the notice to be paid by December 31st to the county clerk, so the city would have until the end of the year to reimburse the county for its portion of those notices. The Second Amendment changes the exemption for small taxing entities from twenty-five thousand to five thousand dollars, which doesn't really apply to us because we're way above that. And the Third Amendment eliminates the requirements to publish the notice of the truth in taxation hearing in official county newspapers. So I guess the thought behind that is, if you're getting a notice in the mail, then they don't have to publish in the newspaper, which I guess saves local governments a little bit of money, but it, it might have, the fact that we have to pay for all these notifications, it's a small amount. The First Amendment would have added an exemption for new construction, and the Second would have added an exemption for tax increases under the CPI rate of inflation, but those amendments have failed on votes that were not recorded. The leak continues to work with stakeholders in the House, now that it's moved to the House, and they're expecting a hearing in the next couple of weeks in the House Taxation Committee. And since it is just after the turnaround week, which was last week, since it has gone from the Senate to the House, it is now still in play, whereas bills that have not made a migration from one house, the originating house to the other house, are effectively dead. So this, this bill is still affect, or still in the process and could become law. And if it is passed, it would be effective January, I'm sorry, July 1st of this year. So, that's your update on that. I haven't yet located the information on the Hansbury ordinance. Once I do have that, I'll get that out to you, I'll see you guys, you'll let that stand. So, that's kind of what I have right now.
Anything else for the good of the order?
We have the city-counting Employee Appreciation Breakfast on Friday morning. That was on the... And so, it begins at, do you remember what time that begins?
Yeah, no, I got my notes here. The next community dialogue with the city manager will be on Wednesday the fourth at Brad Fergin Memorial Library, 5:30. As the mayor has already said, there'll be a statewide tornado drill conducted on March 3rd tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So, that will include activation of NOAA, weather radios, the emergency alert system, and the tornado sirens. The employee breakfast is March 6th this Friday from 6:30 to 8:00 a.m., I'm sorry, 6:30 to 8:30 a.m. At the Butler County Kennedy Building. We were informed of that very recently by the county. So if you're available and would like to come down, we invite you to do so for good breakfast on Friday. And just a reminder that March 8th is dead savings time, so spring those clocks forward.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. For adjourn.